Declare this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council. Call to order, please, on November 9th, 2021. Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Present.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several other city staff that's in the audience. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by Quinn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's approved. Okay, it's my pleasure this evening to issue a proclamation that's near and dear to my heart. I spent, as most of you know, over 22 years or so of my career trying to prevent injuries, and this is coming up on Injury Prevention Month, and several great colleagues are in the audience tonight. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas unintentional injuries are the leading cause of death for Iowans ages 1 to 44, and the fourth leading cause of death for all ages. And whereas injuries and violence resulted in an average, an annual average of 2,100 deaths, 17,200 hospitalizations, excuse me, and 257,000 emergency department visits annually in Iowa. The number of injuries in Iowa is estimated to be higher due to the unknown number of individuals who received other medical care or no care at all. And whereas injuries can result in a high cost to Iowans with an average charges up to $43,200 per hospitalization and $2,700 per emergency department visit annually. And whereas in Iowa, the three leading causes of unintentional injury deaths in 2020 were falls, motor vehicle crashes, and unintentional poisonings. And whereas injuries, whether intentional or unintentional, are preventable within the state of Iowa, the Iowa Department of Public Health, the University of Iowa Injury Prevention Research Center, the University of Iowa Healthcare, and other partners across the state are committed to increasing public awareness on and education around the prevention of injuries within the state of Iowa. Now therefore, I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim the November 18th, 2021, to be the National Injury Prevention Day in the City of Corleville, and urge all residents to participate in activities that help educate and promote the importance of injury prevention. Signed this 9th day of November, John A. Lundell. And I believe we have Pam Hoogerworth is going to speak on behalf of the injury prevention community.
Is that on?
We're going to take a picture in a minute, too, so we'll...
It should be on.
It should be on.
It should be on?
Yep.
Okay, okay, great. I guess I drew the short straw representing our team, but I'm Pam Hoogerworth. I'm the program manager of Pediatric Injury Prevention and Outreach at the University of Iowa-Sted Family Children's Hospital. I have two colleagues with me tonight. Dr. Charles Jennison is a clinical professor and a pediatric emergency medicine doc, and often is on the front line of seeing pediatric injuries that present to our hospital. And my other colleague that's with me is Crystal Ouijin, who is our pediatric trauma program manager. Again, on the front lines, oftentimes after they're admitted to our hospital, works with the children and their families on their continuity of care and learning how they got injured, and that's what's helped us develop a lot of our injury prevention programs. If any of you take one piece of that proclamation home with you and put it in your brain, it's the statement about unintentional injuries from birth to 44 years of age are killing and disabling that population more than any medical disease. And that oftentimes is a big surprise to people. And the sad, tragic part of that is that many of those injuries and deaths can be prevented if they just maybe chose a safer behavior, and certainly the educational piece of it is what we're, you know, is what we're supposed to be doing out in our, in our community and our state. So I thank you. I thank Mayor Lundell. I thank the city council for supporting this proclamation. I want to say a special message to John. As he mentioned, the three of us had have had a opportunity, and we had a privilege to work with John when he was deputy director at the Injury Prevention Research Center at the College of Public Health. And I'm sure, not a surprise to any of you, he really put that center on the map, and it continues to be that way. And so, John, we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
We thank you for your time as an elected official, and we wish you really great luck in your future endeavors, and I plan on seeing you at a Hawkeye event, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, go Hawks!
You bet. All right. We'll take a quick picture.
Thank you for those kind words, Pam.
Absolutely. Will somebody take our phone with a phone? Please, please. Thank you. I don't know if you've got this people to work with.
Yeah, okay, either way.
Okay. Great. Hey Chuck. Chuck. I don't know if you remember me from Jill Dodd's from the Nicky days about 20 some years ago.
Hi.
I know, I know. There, there you go.
Okay, that was fun.
Long time ago.
But we have more business to take care of.
Thank you for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is citizen comments. This is a time for anyone in the audience to like to speak to us this evening about an item that's not already on the agenda. Anyone want to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to item six, Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a public hearing for discussion on a CDBG application that will benefit the Corleville Community Food Pantry Commercial Kitchen Equipment. So item A is a public hearing. I would like to open this public hearing on this grant application to the CDBG program. Would anyone like to speak tonight? Sure. We know you, John, but please introduce yourself and sign in.
I brought some notes just in case. Okay. My name's John Bowler, Executive Director of the Corleville Community Food Pantry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff. Good to see you all. So first, I actually want to start off and just say thank you on behalf of myself and the Corleville Community Food Pantry. I'm joined tonight by two board members, Robert Rogers and Bob Dvorsky, and I know they echo my sentiment here, as do our staff, our volunteers, and our members. In the nine years that I've been with the organization, I know the City of Corleville's been deeply supportive, so I thank you. It's been especially evident in the last 19 months, which have been very hard, but we've been able to remain a vital safety net for our neighbors thanks to the support of the City of Corleville, so we appreciate that. And I'm grateful for the city's eagerness to pursue these CDBG funds on our behalf. We're excited to potentially receive these funds that would assist us in increasing food access in our community, so it would help us purchase a walk-in cooler, walk-in freezer, and it would also help us renovate an existing commercial kitchen space at one of our partners, Coralville United Methodist Church, and we use their kitchen for community meals. We would like to launch a more routine, formal hot meal program in the coming year, and this will allow us to do that. And there's also potential to use the space as an incubator program for those in our community who wish to start their own small food businesses, so that's all really exciting. So, big picture, again, this grant would allow us to increase healthy and high-quality food access and also build community wealth for our most marginalized and vulnerable neighbors. So, you know, historically, we have been recipients of CDBG funds both through the City of Corleville and Johnson County, so we are capable of managing those funds. We have the infrastructure to do so, are able to fulfill all reporting requirements. But again, we just really appreciate you going forward with this grant on our behalf, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, too. Otherwise, I'm happy to take a seat.
Okay, John. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thanks for all you do, John.
Ellen, I believe, do you have to read some comments during the public hearing?
Correct, if there are no other comments.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Otherwise, Ellen has some language she needs to enter into the record.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you said, community development block grants do have some requirements as far as public information and public notice, and this is something that is required prior to our application. So, how the need for the proposed activities was identified, and that is that an increased number of people with employment issues resulting from coronavirus or associated childcare issues has resulted in more people who rely on the Corleville Community Food Pantry. Source of funding, the application requests $100,000 in CDBG funding and $9,500 in funding from the City of Corleville. Date the application will be submitted is December 1, 2021. Amount of federal funds to be requested is $100,000. The portion of federal funds benefiting low-to-moderate income households will be 100%. And the location of proposed activities will be the Corleville Community Food Pantry at 806 13th Avenue in Corleville. Plans to minimize displacement of persons or businesses from funding activities, there will be no displacement of persons or businesses from funded activities. Plans to assist those displaced, this is not applicable. And the nature of the proposed activities, the CDBG funds will be used to purchase equipment that will renovate and expand an existing commercial kitchen space. The equipment will be used to allow for increased space to store food items for distribution, launch the Food Pantry's Eat Together Corleville Hot Meal Program, and open a food incubator program. City contact information for residents to contact with concerns or complaints regarding the project is myself, Ellen Hubble, Deputy City Administrator. Email address is ehabble@corleville.org or phone 319-248-1700. And community development and housing needs of low-to-moderate income persons in the city and any planned or potential activities to address these needs. If members of the public have input on this item, they can share those during the public hearing or contact City Clerk Thor Johnson at 319-248-1700 or tjohnson@corleville.org, and the comments will be included in the minutes. Other community development and housing needs and any planned or potential activities to address these needs. If members of the public have input on this item, please share those during the public hearing or contact City Clerk Thor Johnson at 319-248-1700 or tjohnson@corleville.org, and the comments will be included in the minutes. Other community development and housing needs and any planned or potential activities to address these needs. If members of the public have input on this item, please share those during the public hearing or contact City Clerk Thor Johnson at 319-248-1700 or tjohnson@corleville.org, and the comments will be included in the minutes. And we also need to conduct a community development and housing needs assessment. And we did this most recently as part of the applications for the Housing Rehabilitation and Home Buyer Assistance Program. So updating it a little bit, haven't made a lot of changes because some of these things, you know, continue to be issues. So the items we've identified are improving capacity of and access to food pantry services through equipment purchase, rehabilitation of existing housing in the community, particularly those owned by low-to-moderate income persons and seniors, increasing opportunity for home purchase for low-to-moderate income home buyers, ensuring public services are provided at affordable rates for persons with low-to-moderate income, and reducing risk to life and property from severe storms through electric utility hardening. Other community development and housing needs of non-low-to-moderate income residents are to increase and rehabilitate the city's housing stock, encourage variety of options in price and type of newly constructed housing, ensure that transportation options in the community provide adequate mobility and accessibility, and ensure the city's infrastructure, including but not limited to transportation and opportunities for park recreation and essential public services, are available in all areas of the community. And then our planned or potential activities to address those needs. One is to apply for funding under the CDBG program to assist with improving capacity of and access to food pantry services for low and moderate income households. Assisting low-to-moderate income households with making improvements to their homes through existing CDBG funds and applying for future funding as available. Assisting low-to-moderate income home buyers with purchasing homes in Corleville through Community Development Block Grant Program funding and applying for future funding as available. And applying for funding as available to relocate utilities in front yards and below ground to improve resiliency in neighborhoods. Continuing to seek funding opportunities for activities that improve neighborhoods and enhance quality of life, prioritizing street, park recreation, and public service improvements to make the best use of public dollars, and continuing to make improvements to flood-prone areas to make them less vulnerable during major flood events. And if there are any additional comments or items for the assessment, we can take those now, or as I mentioned, people can contact the city clerk.
Any additional comments? Any written comments?
No written.
I will say that yesterday, I received a letter from Bob and Sue Dvorsky in support of the Food Pantry, and I'll make sure that that gets entered into the record. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and the resolution, please, Don?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction con... Whoops, excuse me. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to sign, execute, and submit an application and associated documents for funding via the Community Development Block Grant Program for the purchase of Corleville Community Food Pantry Commercial Kitchen Equipment introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second. Seconded by Gross. Any council discussion?
I do just want to note that I will need to abstain from voting on this item. I am, for a conflict of interests, since I am the vice chair of the Corleville Food Pantry Board of Directors.
Okay, thank you.
I think I also need to do the same because I'm a staff with the Corleville Food Pantry.
So I would ask that when the council members make that abstain, say it with conflict, that means that we can have a majority of the three remaining votes, so if you'd, I'd ask that you say abstain with conflict, please. Thank you.
I have to abstain from voting?
When I ask for the votes, we do that.
Oh, just say abstain. Got it. This is my first step.
Sorry about that.
I wasn't sure either, what he meant. I don't know what's happening. Thank you.
And I was going to say, if this does pass, I would like to see if I can get a commitment from my council colleague Quinn that she'll use this commercial kitchen to bring dinner for the council.
I can promise that much.
Wonderful.
I don't know, maybe you need to abstain.
We can't afford anybody else. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Abstain, is that it?
With conflict.
With conflict, thank you.
Thank you. Dodd's.
As the number one fan, I enthusiastically vote aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Abstain with conflict.
Thank you. Passes on a three to zero.
Okay, passed, approved three to zero with two, two abstan... two members abstaining. Okay, item number seven is the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Project. This is for constructing a stormwater improvements on Fifth Avenue north of Seventh Street to address longstanding drainage problems in the, in the backyards of those neighborhoods. City Engineer Scott Larson, bid report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So a week ago, we received eight bids for this project, which was a surprising number. The engineer's estimate was $96,500, and the high bid of those eight bids was just under $125,000, and the low bid was $92,125, so slightly under the engineer's estimate. And that low bid was received from Midwest Concrete Incorporated from Piasta, and after reviewing the numbers, we recommend awarding the contract to Midwest Concrete Incorporated.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Then item B is a resolution accepting the bids and awarding the contract.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the Fifth Street Storm Sewer Project introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call. Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item C is a resolution for the same project approving the contract and bond documents.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Fifth Street Storm Sewer Project introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item eight is engineering services agreement. Item A is an agreement for the testing of two vehicular bridges to determine recommended maintenance and, and estimated bridge life. This is for Venestra &amp; Kim Incorporated to do the work. Tom?
Resolution approving the engineering services agreement with Venestra &amp; Kim, Inc. for Bridge Inspection Services introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item B is a resolution approving an engineering agreement with HR Green for reviewing the flood wall system located south of Clear Creek between the Iowa River and the Iowa Interstate Railroad. Tom?
Resolution approving engineering services agreement with HR Green, Inc. for flood wall review and recommendations to achieve FEMA certification, introduced by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item nine, Forever Green Heights, Plat 1. This is a resolution for partial acceptance of Storm Sewer, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Main constructed by Maxwell Construction and the paving work constructed by Streb Construction in the Forever Green Heights subdivision, excluding sidewalks at this time.
Resolution partially accepting public improvements constructed on lots 1 through 50 and lots 63 through 70 for Evergreen Heights, Plat 1, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution approved, all ayes. Item 10 is Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain. This is, item A is a motion to approve the pay estimate number three, which is the final to All American Concrete, Inc., for the improvements to Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain Project. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dodd's, seconded by...
Second.
Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have an amount there?
The amount, if you'd like to have it entered in, oh, it says zero.
Yeah, I think it was going to be reported tonight.
Zero. Everything's been paid out.
Oh, it is correct. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Item B is a resolution accepting the project as completed.
Resolution accepting the Muddy Creek Patching and Subdrain 2021 Project as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item 11 is the Heartland Drive Payment Repair 2021. This is a, first is a motion to accept the pay estimate number one final to L.L. Pelling for this project for the improvements to Heartland Drive. I'd entertain, in the amount of $106,199.79, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by...
Second.
By Dodd's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Now a resolution to accept the project as completed.
Resolution accepting the Heartland Drive Payment Repair 2021 Project as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item 12 is the Fourth Avenue Place Demolitions. This is for the demolition of vacant structures and tree removal on city-owned Fourth Avenue Place properties. Quotation report, please.
Yes, we received two bids for this. The bid of Freeman Construction in the amount of $33,634 for the demolition and removal of seven trees that are dead on Fourth Avenue Place, so we received another bid that was $55,000, so we got a low bid on this one, and I recommend awarding the contract to Freeman Construction in the amount of $33,634.
Thank you. Thank you. Item B is a resolution accepting and approving the project for Freeman Construction.
Resolution accepting quotations and approving a demolition and tree removal services agreement with Freeman Construction, Inc. for Fourth Avenue Place, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion?
Do we know when this will take place?
So the, under Iowa law, you can't start demolition of any structures until you give the DNR 10 days' notice, so once he signs the contract, they'll give the DNR 10 days' notice, but in the meantime, there are two things that have to happen. The trees have to be removed, and also the, all the utilities have to be removed from the main that goes up Fourth Avenue Place, so he can start on those two things, he just can't start on the demolition. As you see, as, if you've seen right now, the asbestos was removed, so that's already taken care of, so this is, this would be the final step before we'd redevelop that area into a project I'm sure we talk about in the future.
Does that have any impact on resident around that area?
The only thing is, would be there, we, we don't own the, the complex that is straight on the north side of Fourth Avenue Place, but they should be able to go on, they should be able to stay pretty much on the, off the street here because the houses are all vacant, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call. Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item 13 is sewer and water connection fees. This is a resolution acknowledging that the full payment for the north end area sewer and water connection fees that were levied against Auburn Ridge, Corleville, Iowa, have been paid.
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the north end area sewer and water connection fees levied against Auburn Ridge, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
That was close. Seconded by Gross.
Ooh!
Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item 14 is first option amendments. This is a resolution for first op, for basically lease amendment with Diamond Leaf in the Iowa River Landing for three years ending in June 30th, 2025.
Resolution approving the first option to lease agreement with Diamond Leaf, Inc. for 920 East Second Avenue, Suite 117, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, so the suite 117, is that where the jewelry store is? And then the next one is with the bridal shop?
Right. They're owned by the same individual, but they're separate leases.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I had the right one in my, in my head, so...
Bad looking, are you?
No. Well, jewelry, yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to comment that this is very exciting that our businesses down at the IRL are re-leasing, and so apparently they are doing very well, and that's great news.
Yes, it is.
And the term of the lease, usually is the tenant choose the term of the lease, or we choose?
It's a negotiated upfront. Usually when we do a lease upfront, a lot of times they'll be like, they'll have one or two option terms. So, this is, these, both these two agreements are exercising the first option. So, the bigger retailers or larger retailers like Lululemon would have longer initial terms and longer option terms, but these are just, these I think are just matching up, so they're on the same schedule now, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Rockall, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes. Item B is a very similar, as was mentioned, the same owner also has Diamond Bridal Ventures, and this is to renew the lease for three years extending to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Resolution approving the first option to lease agreement with Diamond Bridal Ventures, LLC, for nine twenty East Second Avenue, Suite one two zero, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion?
Rockall.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item fifteen is the Iowa River Landing Retail Lease Amendment. This is for the, the company doing business as Funky Zebras, who wishes to enter into a three-year lease agreement with an option for an additional three-year term for their space in the Iowa River Landing. And this is setting a public hearing, I guess, on November twenty-third.
Yeah, Funky Zebras had a license agreement, which was a yearly lease, so they have decided to enter into a three-year lease, and state law requires any lease with, it's three years or more to have a public hearing first. So this is setting this for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution of intent to enter into a lease agreement with MVCD Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Funky Zebras for nine twenty-three East Second Avenue, D. One one one, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion?
Rockall.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item sixteen is a letter of intent. This is approving a letter of intent with the Clear Creek Amana Community School District regarding their interest in purchasing property from the city of Corville for the siting of a new school on the west side.
Resolution approving a letter of intent for the Clear Creek Amana Community School District regarding the purchase of property from the city of Corville for the siting of a new school. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Kelly, would you like to say a few words on that?
Yeah, this is approximately thirty acres that the city owns off of Oakdale Boulevard, west of Coral Ridge Avenue. And we, as part of the West Land Use Master Plan, one of the things that we had identified was a large public space that we could provide recreational and other services. And the hope is that we could enter a long-term agreement with the Clear Creek Amana School District for this facility to be that. And they ask for a ninety-day option, so they can explore all of the things necessary to build a facility on there, and they would ultimately be looking next spring to do a bond issue vote, or have a vote for a bond issue for this facility. If this were to happen, their goal would be to have something open by two thousand twenty-four, so just three years out, because they have, having significant growth.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the council?
Is this for a elementary school?
Yes, it would be an elementary school.
Has a price been set for the land?
It would be for a dollar, assuming that we would be able to enter an agreement for the use of the facilities. And the difference between this, we had a little bit of misunderstanding to begin with, the difference between this and the Iowa City Schools agreements is that they would build the size of facilities, they do build the size of gyms, et cetera, that we were paying Iowa City. So that would be kind of the exchange, is that they already build that, the types and sizes of facilities that we would need.
So the community would have access to gyms and the entire facility under this agreement, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And before and after.
Well, that agreement would come back before you, because this just gives the ninety days to work on an agreement such as that, and for them to do the expiration.
And this would include a, potentially a before and after-school program that?
Yep, for before and after-school programming, an outdoor playground, and, for the community to use, and then the gyms, so.
Anything else? Rockall.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item seventeen is financing. This is the, the cities required to determine whether it will appropriate funds for bond payments by December first of each year. Dodd?
Resolution appropriating payment of certain annual appropriation debt service instruments and directing the finance officer to certify tax increment financing debt to the Johnson County Auditor, introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion?
Rockall.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item eighteen is inter-fund TIF loans. Again, this is a resolution authorizing internal advance payable from the TIF revenue for urban renewal project costs. This is a seventy-five thousand dollar advance for financing projects from the Corville Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Revenue Fund.
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from the Tax Increment Revenue Fund for urban renewal project costs, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Discussion?
I just wanted to point out for the general community that this is not new debt. This is just payment in advance that we had already planned for with the tax increment financing, and will be repaid with that same fund, so.
Very good. Rockall.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item B of, under this item, is a similar thing, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar advance for financing projects from the Twelfth Avenue Urban Renewal Tax Increment Revenue Fund.
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from Tax Increment Revenue Fund for urban renewal project costs, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Rockall.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Now, item nineteen, I'd consider a motion to approve consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through R inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
By Quinn. Any discussions or questions?
Rockall.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved unanimously as presented. City administrators report.
The only thing I have is just to remind the public that we will be celebrating Veterans Day this Thursday, and so solid waste pickup will be on Friday instead of Thursday. And then I'd just like to thank our city attorney, Don Deal, for his service to our country.
Thank you, Kelly. To tag on to the Veterans Day, I believe that transit is free that day for veterans, so. And again, thank, thank you to everyone for their service in the armed services. I'd like to, a couple things. One, I want to congratulate my colleagues on the council that were re-elected, and our newly elected mayor. Council member Quinn and council member Goodrich were both re-elected resoundingly, and current council member Foster is now mayor-elect. So congratulations to the three of you, and you'll do cities in good hands.
Thank you.
Yep. And second thing is, we have an unusually, in my opinion, unusually large number of vacancies in our boards and commissions. Now, there, that doesn't mean that some current members that are filling these slots where their terms are expiring won't reapply, but you never know whether they're, I, I know that several are not reapplying for various reasons, moving out of town and et cetera. So we, I'd just like to say that we have three openings on planning and zoning, two on Parks and Rec Commission, one on the Civil Service Commission, three on the Arts Commission, and two on the Board of Adjustment. So let's see, that's five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, eleven openings. And so it's a great way to be involved in the city and to serve the city of Corville. There's more, more information on each of these roles on the city website, and most importantly, the deadline for applying is five PM on November twenty-fourth. So that's just a little over two weeks from now. So please consider applying, always looking for good applications. City attorneys report.
I would advise you that there's a lot of magistrate court activity, stuff that has been continued from July and August and September is finally coming up, every day last week and every day this week. And that'll continue for a while, but it's time to take care of them. Kevin?
Oh, I just was gonna, I always remember Veterans Day from my history lesson, that the armistice on World War One was signed on the eleventh, was on the eleventh day of the eleventh month, and eleven o'clock AM, so everybody should remember eleven, eleven. November eleventh would be the, why Veterans Day is that same day, so.
Thank you. Committee and council members report. Well, let's start with the, with the newly elected. Lori, you can go first.
I do have a little bit of a list. I'd just like to welcome Mike Knutson, who's out in the audience tonight, too. He will serve with us in, starting in January. And thank you to all our veterans and those who are currently serving. Events at the arena have been really exciting, and it's been fun to see so many different variety of things that are going on there, so encourage people to check that out. Shop local. And also, speaking of shopping, there's the Corville Public Library's Friends of the Library are having their Friday sale. It'll be in the lower level, downstairs of the library, and it's called a super book sale. So that's this Friday, November twelfth, and you just pay what you want. So it's from one-thirty to five-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I apologize. I should have, in listing the newly elected, re-elected, I should have mentioned you, Mike, Mike Knutson. You'll be a great addition, so. I'm glad Lori remembered. Council member Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank you all the residents who put their name in the hat this past election. It takes courage to, you know, put yourself out there and want to serve your community in a, in a different way. And congratulations to Mike, looking forward to serving with you come January first. And congratulations to our first ever female elected mayor in a hundred and forty-eight years of Corville history. History is indeed made. I want to let residents who live in Corville know that there is a free beginning English language class for adults that take place at the Corville Public Library twice weekly on Wednesday and Friday from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. And the first class starts tomorrow. Right now, it's still happening over Zoom, so if you need a Zoom link, email Ellen at the library, ehempe@corville.org, and she can get you the link. I had the, the honor and privilege to sit in in one of the classes, and I have to say, the volunteer instructor do a really good job of, you know, helping community residents learn English. Congratulations to the Pride Fest staff for hosting the first ever successful Pride Fest event in Corville. I unfortunately have a schedule conflict, and so I couldn't attend, but I heard great things from it, and I know that a lot of my colleague was able to attend. I'm looking forward to attend next year in person. I did went to the donor appreciation that Houses Into Home hosted at the CCPA, and I have to say, that is an amazing organization, and we are lucky to have them in our community. They do such good work, and I would invite you all to check out their website, and also volunteer and donate, generally use how host item. They are always looking for bed, especially twin bed. It's always in short, in high need and, and short supply, so. And last, but most importantly, vaccine is approved for five to eleven, and there are several sites in the community where you can take your children there and get vaccinated. We took our son last Friday to the IRL to get his shot, and he was really proud to, to get it, and, and really happy that now he's halfway protected. And so I would encourage everyone out there who have children in that age range, please, you know, get your kid vaccinated. I know that a school is also hosting vaccine events, so check that out. You know, obviously you have to, an adult have to be present for that. And that all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor-elect Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo the congratulations to my current colleagues and my future colleague, Mike Knutson. Also want to give a shout out to the other historic candidate that we have. Council member Quinn actually made history last year when she was elected. She was the first Vietnamese-American in the entire state to hold, to win an election and hold elected office. So congratulations to all of you. And also, I want to say congratulations to our, all of our colleagues in Johnson County who are on the ballot, our school board members, our, our colleagues in, in the other municipalities that we work with, including Iowa City, North Liberty, Hills, Oxford. We all collaborate, you know, we're, we're, you know, different municipalities, but we all have the same interests as residents of, of this county. So I feel very fortunate to work in Johnson County alongside of so many amazing elected officials. I think that's one of the reasons Johnson County is one of the counties in the state where we are seeing growth, because we all are, are working really hard to make this the best place in the state of Iowa to live, work, and play. I also wanted to say thank you to the staff at the auditor's office for all of their hard work on, on making this year's election run smoothly. I know that there were a lot of changes, a lot of things that, you know, they, where they needed to adjust, and, and they just did a fantastic job. I also wanted to give congratulations, a shout out to the organizers, the volunteers, the sponsors for the Pride Fest. I am so happy that it came to fruition. It's something I know we've been, you know, working on getting off the ground for several years. It was, it was just really fun to, to see that finally happen. Wanted to also say congratulations to Mayor Lundell, who did receive an honor roll award at Pride Fest for his longstanding support of the LGBTQIA+ community. I was wondering if someone could get, if someone had some information about the community gift card program that's available? Kelly, do you have some information on that?
Yeah, all of that, information on that gift card program is available on the Convention and Visitors Bureau's website, and you will be able to get at no charge gift cards that can be used in, at, in Johnson County businesses that are registered. So they do have to register to be able to go through with that, but that is a free program, and it is for Johnson County businesses. So a very good program that they've been working on for some time. Ellen, what's the name? Johnson County? Yeah, Shakjoko, that's right.
It's a great way to keep those, those dollars in our community, and to, you know, make sure that everybody has the ability to access gifts or, or any type of needs that they may have over the holidays. I'm also excited to say that my eight-year-old son received his first dose of the vaccine yesterday as well. It, it was, it was just a wonderful feeling to have that milestone achieved. I believe that Kirkwood Elementary is one of the sites where, where you can, in the community where you, through the schools, where you can get your children vaccinated. And then finally, just wanted to say thank you to Don, all the other veterans in our community for your service, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Council member Gross.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with a thank you to, yeah, all of our servicemen and women for their service on this Veterans Day. I guess Kevin, as the history teacher, do you know where the armistice was signed?
The, the train car in Versailles, not?
Compéen, France, so.
I have to, obviously your degree trumps mine.
Don't forget it. Alright, there you go. Just pass on some information. But obviously, appreciate everyone's service to keep, yeah, in our, in our service. And I also want to thank our colleagues, my colleagues. You know, I've been asked and have said, and I mean this, you know, well, first let me go back and say, if you would have told me in two thousand and seven that I'd be the old timer on this council, I would have never, ever, ever believed it. It's goofy to think of, but I, I mean this when I say this. This has been the best council I've worked with, and I, and I'm so pleased that it remains intact, and to have Highback, you've just been an amazing addition. I love working with you, and Lori, same thing. And even though you both stole my thunder as the library rep, which is, which is, I'm forgiving it this week since you just won reelection. Next time I'll be upset. But, no, I'm so glad to have both of you on, as colleagues. And Mike can't wait. You know, I got to know Mike well when he, when I was, years ago, the Parks and Rec liaison, and Mike was on that commission, and Mike's a great citizen and resident of our community. He's going to be an excellent addition, so I'm really excited about that. And, and obviously, to have Madam Mayor-elect, I think it's going to be fantastic. So really happy and thrilled for you and our city's future. So I, I feel so good about the direction of, of our community and where it's headed. So just very, very pleased and honored and humble to be part of this group. I also want to say. Uh, I also want to say, uh, regarding the elections, too, uh, Megan mentioned the school board. I can't remember the last time we've had two Corvillians on the school board, so I think that's huge. I know it's not, you know, it's not regionalized that way, uh, but, uh, it's important to have that kind of representation in our district. So kudos, uh, to newly, actually, I think she got sworn in tonight, Jane Finch, uh, as well as J. P. Clausen, as they, uh, joined the helm of the school board. Uh, I too want to say thank you for everyone that planned the Corville Pride Fest. Uh, it was a fun event, uh, on Sunday, and, uh, if you haven't been to Tavern Blue, it's a great venue, very exciting, a lot, a lot of things to do. And, uh, I think it's just another example of, of where our city is at and the kind of, uh, welcome atmosphere we want to have and create here in Corville. And lastly, let me see if I'm getting everything. I guess I will reiterate, there is a book sale this weekend. Uh, it is by donation only, and I too, uh, I have been a guest at, uh, the E L L classes, that our library staff does. And, and it, they're all, uh, that, it's teachers and instructors are retired English language learner teachers. So they're, they're trained, they are, uh, amazing in what they do, uh, and it's a great free service that our community offers. So those classes are starting off, uh, this week as well, so that's all we've got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Cheers, yep.
Jill, bring us home, please.
All righty, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm very excited to congratulate Mayor-elect Foster, Councilwoman Quinn, and Councilwoman Goodrich on your re-elections and your, uh, step up, should we say? And welcome to Mike, looking forward to getting to know you better. Um, besides our brief little phone call, he called me the next day and, um, after I left him a screaming email of congratulations the night before, and, as we were all yelling too loud. And, um, but I was, uh, a little under the weather from the COVID booster, but I feel that immunity just surging through my, my veins right now. Um, my three grandkids got their shots today, so I'm feeling really happy about that. I will reiterate again, Veterans Day, thank you to everyone who has, who has, um, served. One other thing I wanted to, um, mention, we have a, such a great health insurance program for all of our, uh, city employees. But for those of you who are self-employed with, like myself, um, that is now open enrollment time, so don't let that get away from you. Since President Biden has taken office and putting in some new rules, the prices have come way down significantly, like seventy-five percent on some of the marketplace plans. And I am also studying the Medicare ones for my parents and, and looking at the Medicare Advantage. And there's a lot of, um, very good things. I think it's eliminated some of the donut holes for drugs and things for some of our elderly constituents. So, um, make sure that if you need help, you reach out and get some help from some people. I've spent a lot of time on those websites. And lastly, I'm looking forward to tonight's work session. We're going to get an update on the Citizens Community Policing Advisory Board. And this is something that we've all been looking forward to hearing more about and to see what's happening so far. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
I gotta say this, I got asked by a couple of folks why I was not at the election party. And as much as I said I love all my colleagues, it was my twentieth anniversary on November third, and I do love my wife more, so. She did get priority, uh, on that night, so I apologize for not being with all of you as you celebrated.
We'll try not to hold that against you much.
Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Moved by Gross, seconded by?
Second.
By Goodrich. I assume all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you much.